We appreciate you being here with us today. Before we get started, we have Brother Givens with us to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Heavenly Father, we come today continuing to give you thanks and to give you praise because you're worthy and deserving. You're so good, kind, and merciful, and we thank you for it. For you blessed each of us in our own lives in some special way. And Lord, we're not ashamed of knowing you in the pardon of our sins. Pray for the commissioners this morning, for the judge, for the sheriff, for his department, for all the departments of the county, that your will be done, gather them in decision making, and bless each and everyone in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Givens. All right. Well, the time is 9:01. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court held on June the 11th, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the minutes?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the minutes of Commissioners Court regular session, June 11th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes from the Henderson County, excuse me, the Commissioners Court held on June the 11th, 2024, as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item number two is, boy, I'm tongue-tied today. Consider and discuss presentation from Texas Association of Counties relating to 50 years of participation in the TAC Risk Management Pool Workers' Compensation Program. And this morning, we have Ms. Floyd, who is with TAC and is a representative that we work with quite a deal. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. So I'm Lori Floyd. I am with Texas Association of Counties. I am your HR consultant, and today want to present the court, the county, with this plaque as in a thank you and appreciation for being a member of the TAC Risk Management Pool Workers' Compensation Program for 50 years. So we are celebrating 50 years. Workers' Comp was our founding coverage, and so y'all have been a member of that since the beginning for 50 years. And so we just want to say thank you, and we appreciate your continued participation in the pool.
Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
For many in the public, they don't understand what the Texas Association of Counties is.
Yeah.
Kind of explain it.
It's always fun. Even my family doesn't understand what I do, so it's great. So at TAC, we represent all 254 counties. As part of TAC, though, there is the TAC Risk Management Pool. And so the Risk Management Pool is we pool counties that are part of that and cover their liability coverage. So your workers' compensation, your public official liability, law enforcement liability, auto liability, property, things of that nature. And so the pool pulls together all these counties so that we can help and assist in a much collective kind of way. So any kind of liability, if there's property damage, things like that, we're kind of your insurance carrier, but we're not an insurance carrier. We want to be clear that we're not insurance carrier, but we're kind of like an insurance carrier for your liability coverages. So we're very thankful to have you guys in the pool.
And the Risk Management portion is just one sliver of the Texas Association of Counties.
So as part of TAC, there we have an education service. We have a legislative service. We have the health insurance pool, the unemployment fund, which I'll remember both of those as well. And then there's a whole team back in Austin that makes sure that everybody else is doing what they need to do to provide services for you all, too.
Court, comments? Well, Ms. Floyd, we do appreciate it very much. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
And tell everybody at TAC we'll be seeing, I'm sorry. It's getting started.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item three is receive financial reports, of which we have none today. Item four is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Good morning.
I just had two elections payrolls for approval. Pretty small.
Okay. We've got elections and early voting. Okay. Court, questions on election payrolls and early voting? This should wrap up our latest round of expenses. Okay. Court, any questions, comments? Entertaining motion?
I move to approve the payroll distribution and accounts cash sheet for election and early voting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the payroll distributions for election and early election operations as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number five is consider and take action on submitted contracts, which we have none. Item number six is consider and take action on a request of right-of-way permits. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court. I was contacted by Crescent Heights Water Supply last week for repair on County Road 1405. They will be digging approximately 48 inches deep to repair a one-and-a-half-inch water main line, and they will repair the right-of-way when they're finished. They have all the backup with the permit and the map and your backup.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed utility line activity for Crescent Heights Water Supply to repair a water leak on County Road 1405 located in Precinct One with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Tulley to approve the right-of-way agreement with Crescent Heights Water Supply Corporation for repair of water main on County Road 1405 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, which we have none. And item eight is consider and take action on payment of bills. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We have fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $682,456,64 cents.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions yet.
Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $682,456,64 cents as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills in the amount of $682,456,64 cents as presented. All those in favor the motion? Passes unanimously. Item nine, consider and take action on submitted plaits. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court. This plaits came in here and to be approved for final plat. It does have a roadway in it. It consists of, I don't remember how many lots there was in there, but it is a road that's about 1,700 foot long, has a cul-de-sac at the end. They filed for a variance on the length of road with a cul-de-sac that's over 600 foot. They've got three variances on lots on the cul-de-sac that are, don't meet the minimum requirement for road frontage. And they have asked, this developer is a pretty well-known developer here in Henderson County that's done several developments in my precinct, and we have not got a bond on the road. And they would like to speak today, and I was going to have him speak about the developments they do and stuff. And this is kind of a small development, and I think they're wanting to bring this road into county maintenance, so it would be inspected by the Commissioner and put in a two-year maintenance program if that's what they choose to do. But they're looking not to get a bond and not sell, pre-sell any lots until the construction's completed. So that's what we're here today, to approve this development and see if maybe we can approve this without having a road bond. And I'm not sure in our statutes if it says that we may require them to have a road bond or shall. I didn't get a chance to look that up, and I didn't know if y'all checked them out or not. But if Scott would like to speak on his development, then I'd glad to have him.
Okay. Before we invite up for testimony, any questions or comments concerning what the Commissioner said?
Just the one thing that I saw, Commissioner, on the information sheet, it says it's located within the city's ETJ. Is that, is this app?
Yes, ladies. I talked to the county attorney about that this morning, and it gives the ETJ, they can exercise their extraterritorial jurisdiction if they'd like. And the county attorney was telling me this morning that we really don't have any kind of interlocal agreement with the city on that, and that's something we need to look into because we've been having several of them that the city's not willing to do, that we're wanting us to fall back on. And I think it's more the ones that have roadways in them that they're not going to have jurisdiction over the roadway. So they came to us about doing the plat deal, which is...
The only reason why I ask the question is because I thought that it was like, I know, just recently, Tool, but I thought we just had one with Athens and Gun Barrel.
No, there was one presented. The city passed one, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago, but the county never took action on the agreement, and it must be by mutual action of both.
So yes, that is something we need to look into and get straight with the city of Athens, whether they're going to do the developments in the ETJ or we're going to do them. I don't think it really should be you pick this one and give the other one to us.
Any further questions for the Commissioner before we invite the developer up? Please come forward. Introduce yourself, if you would, please. And Ms. Kimbrough, I'm sure you're going to need to be on hand as well. Please come to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Scott Fullingham. I'm one of the brothers, owners of Brothers Properties here in Athens, Texas. And we're just submitting this plat here, 31 lots, asking for a couple of variances on the three lots and the length of the cul-de-sac. Of course, we could always provide a road bond if absolutely necessary. You know, we were kind of hoping maybe make some sort of agreement with the county to agree not to sell any of the lots. We're not a company that makes our profit off of the lots. You know, the end result here is to sell the homes, spec homes, or either sell the lot to a person that wants to build a custom home. So that's kind of our end game there. So none of those deeds to those lots would be transferred until the final product was completed.
Mr. Fullingham, was it still in y'all's interest to put this in a two-year maintenance program, this become a county road?
Yes, sir.
That's still what you was looking at?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
That would be a deal that, you know, it had to be completed, we inspect it, and then enter it into a two-year maintenance program as well?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I think all the other infrastructure, the water and electricity and stuff will all be, you know, covered out of pocket, you know, without a bond anyway. I think they require that upfront before they ever install anything. But, you know, still, we're approving the plat today, and there's no way we could control if somebody was to go in and sell a lot to somebody with no infrastructure in there. So that's usually the reason we require a bond. A lot of this has changed in the past, and I talked to county attorney this morning about finding out if a developer chooses to do it the old way with a preliminary plat, and he'd come back for a final plat if that was still available. And he said he didn't think so, but they've tried to find out. So I know a lot of this new development stuff is created where developers now, we can go straight to a final plat, they get their bond for all the infrastructure, they can sell lots the next day, and they can use other people's money to put their infrastructure in. And so the legislature passed that to do that, that type of deal, and so they don't have to front their own money. So we require a bond to do it. But seeing that y'all built several developments and stuff here in Henderson County, and we've got one other developer that done one out at Lake Athens, and we didn't require a road bond on him, and it was an ETJ, which they, the city of Athens actually platted that one, and so we wasn't able to have any control over the road bond and stuff at that time.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the utilities are pretty simple. We do have the letter from Encore that they're going to service. Encore actually doesn't charge us anything to install those utilities. The other utility, the public water source is going to be Virginia Hill. That's kind of a minimal cost. It's about $25,000 to $30,000 to upgrade some of those lines for that infrastructure. So relatively minimal on the infrastructure.
Let y'all know where this is located. It's on East College Street at the end, right where we get to 175, right past Colonial Circle, right across East College from East Henderson County Fuel and Oil is where the entrance is going to be.
Court?
What would the, what would the road bond be?
I don't know. It would have to have a figure put on what the infrastructure costs by an engineer, and then they, I don't remember what a percentage is for a bond to cover the face value of it, how much you have to pay for the bond. I think, is it like 2.5% or something like that? Do you know offhand, Judge, what road bond costs, what a bond, construction bond?
No, sir.
And so we're anticipating that that road there to be about $400,000. So really, that bond would be about $10,000, we believe. And of course, I'm sure Velvet and Weeks could probably give you an idea on the opinion of probable cost for that road. So in the event that we absolutely had to do a road bond, we could certainly cover that cost. We hope our reputation precedes us on that.
Court, questions, comments?
I'd like to hear some stuff from Ms. Kimbrough.
Ms. Kimbrough?
Good morning, Court. So this one was kind of a surprise to me. I found out about it Friday afternoon after it closed that same day. Corresponded with the surveyor over the weekend and met with Mr. Fullingham the following week, along with the county attorney, Representative Mr. Strong, under the, Mr. Fullingham's belief that this one would be in court rather quickly. So I do hope that we get better arrangements regarding notification and the time that it takes our office to do our job. I'm not sure what the miscommunication was on this one. However, we are to the point where the file is complete pending the consideration by the court regarding the bond. So I do not have any bids, construction bids regarding the road from Mr. Fullingham. However, it sounds like he might have those available if the court decided it needed a bond put in place. This, the one concern I do have about the specific location after driving the location and assessing it for the various things that I work on is the proximity to 175 and possibly the traffic from the 31 lots. However, that's not something that's addressed or that we had time to request an actual traffic study on that. So those pretty much are my comments. Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any.
I'm just concerned that if we do one without a road bond, that it's going to be something we're going to have to do every time. I know his reputation is impeccable in the county, but there's lots of contractors in the county also.
We do have some pending applications that I've asked for construction bids on those so that we'd have some idea what the cost is or what the bond might need to be. But that's totally up to the court as to the activities of approval or disapproval. But we are asking and would have asked in this case had we had the time to do so.
I know we've had several go through the city. The city did it within their ETJ.
Yes, sir.
This one is within the ETJ, but we're doing it.
Yes, sir.
So, and I know we don't have an agreement with the city of Athens, and that's something we need to work on. So we really don't have a foothold there because, I mean, if we don't have an agreement with them, they can pick and choose if we allow that.
Well, I would really like to avoid that simply because of the timeframe generally. If that deferment is made, apparently there's a lot of work that's gone into that deferment that hasn't been given to my office, and it's caught in the middle of our...
But without an agreement.
Yes, sir.
Which we're, I think, those thought we had, but we don't.
I know I talked to the First State Bank today, and they were foreclosing on a development that got started and never was finished. And I'd asked them, I said, was there a road bond on it or anything? And he said, no, you know, on that deal, too. So they got stuck with it with no road bond or anything like that. So that's one thing, you know, issues like that come up, you know. I know road bonds are something we had, we got in our hands, and you can, we can put up some other kind of financial type deal, too. But I think road bonds is the cheapest on the developer when they do get a bond. I've always heard that when you do get a bond, if you get the collection, it's like pulling hen's teeth in. So, you know, so we don't know which way's the best way to go.
Any further discussion? I will add one thing. We've got a waiver for, or two lots, a waiver for each one of those, and the length of the road.
Yes, sir.
Was a waiver for the ingress and egress needed in this?
Probably, but there was no time to do that. Like I said, I found this out Friday afternoon. First meeting was Wednesday. The filing was anticipated the next day, which the project was incomplete. And I thought the filing was going to be much later. Was anticipating Mr. Fullingham being out of town for a period of time and was expecting to work with him a little bit more. However, the filing was done, and we're here today. So I just think for the future, we probably need to have a better communication process between us and either the city or the developer.
The only other question I have, does the turning radius on the cul-de-sac meet specification as well?
Yeah, they're 65.
65? Okay. Sixty-five, okay. Any further discussion, Court? If not, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Take action.
Do we make a motion on this? Do we need to do the variances separate, or is it all all together?
We've done them either way. If we are going to file it, it would be approved for filing purposes only and approval of the variances that have been presented. I see that we're one variant short for the two ways of ingress egress. If you would, please come back forward.
Yes, sir. So, so in regards to the, to the timing, you know, typically whenever you purchase a property, you have thirty days or forty-five days, you know, some sort of feasibility period. So I guess there's really no mechanism within the county to kind of, you know, go through that feasibility process. So that was kind of why there was a rush and maybe a missed variance there. But, you know, developers like only have so long to really go through and do their homework to make sure that you really have the highest and best use of the property. And so really, in this situation, we've kind of put the cart before the horse almost, because we've actually closed on the property, you know, and we spent the money. And so, and, you know, then after the fact, we're filing, you know, we're kind of hoping. So I guess in the future, I'm kind of hoping maybe the county can put in some sort of mechanism to give the developers or the buyers the ability to work through those processes, you know, a little bit better before they actually close and spend the money on those properties. So we move really quickly. Some of that's on me, just trying to get things done. But we may, we may have missed one there that we're more than willing to, you know, file if we need to.
There's, you know, a pre-development that's, that's not owned by the developer that's speculating on buying something. It's kind of hard to do anything on, because you really need to be the owner or something to do the development. Now, you can come to a commissioner and ask, will this fly? Will this go? How does this work here? Well, that's just one commissioner's opinion, you know. We vote as a court when it comes in and on this, what we bring in front of everybody. And so it's just, it's kind of hard to do any kind of pre-development plans without having everybody together and telling you, yes, this is going to work, you know, that it'll pass. Because I can't tell you that. All I can tell you is what I think and what previous courts have said and stuff like that. So a pre-development type deal before you ever purchase a land would be kind of a hard deal to do, you know, because I know it requires you to be the owner of it. And, you know, and then when you bring it, bring it to the clerk's office, you've got to have your paid tax receipts and a bunch of other different stuff, and the notary that you're the owner of the land. So before you ever get it to court. So we can't really bring it to court on a pre-development type deal and let you know that, that what you've got submitted is going to, going to pass. And I understand Commissioner McCam's deal, we've got several big developments going on right now. Some of them's, you know, they're got six million dollars worth of roads in them, and, you know, we're making them get a road bond, which they're going to have a pre-sale. They're going to pre-sell lots in July if they can get it passed by the court by then. And, but I don't know if we do one, it don't matter how big it is, they might come back and say, well, you didn't make them get a road bond, why did we have to get one? And I could always say, well, it's the cost of the money, you know. I don't know if there was something, if there was anything we can, you know, legislator hasn't put that in their rules, if it's under a certain amount that we can waive it. I think it's our decision whether we want to make you get a road bond or not, but we're looking out for the purchaser of the land and to make sure that they meet all the health and safety codes and everything that we need to have in there. And if they get something bought that doesn't have a roadway in it that's completed, then they're going to come back on us that we didn't do what we're supposed to do. But I do take into consideration that y'all do live here in Athens, Texas. You're not a developer from out of town. I've seen y'all's work and what y'all completed, and it all looks nice. Y'all've got duplexes and stuff over by the airport. Y'all built houses on our county road. Y'all still own lots there. Y'all, y'all built the house and then you sell it. And there wasn't any pre-selling stuff on that one. So I do take into consideration that y'all've done in the county what you said you'd do before. If we was to move this today, would that other variance come in and be voted in at a different time, pick it up, or if we approve it today, is it approved?
It, it really needs to all go at once.
One time?
Yeah. That way, it's all in one action. It's there for historically, after the development is sold the second time, you know, when you get general, moving down into it, that way it's clear history for individuals when they're looking at the, at the records. If we, the statute calls for if we deny, we give a list of reasons of why it did not, and present that back to the developer for them to make the corrections, to move, to move forward from there. Can either accept or deny with reason. Any other discussion? Entertained a motion.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the final plat for Grace Haven subdivision in the, for filing purposes only.
Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. In continuation with the process, a list of reasons will be, need to be given so that they can address those, and we stay within, in courts. And I believe I'm here today, those have been identified as through the one variance, and what I'm assuming is the bond. Yes, sir. Item ten, is opening considered bids? Mr. Torres?
I have one bid packet this morning. It's for the cement bulk Portland CKD riprap iron ore. These were raw materials that we did not receive any bids on, and we're going out again to see if we'll receive any bids. Proposed dates are the first ad to be this Saturday, June twenty-second, second ad to be next Saturday, June twenty-ninth. And I have on my calendar, we will not have court on Tuesday, the sixteenth. So I propose that we leave it open for an extra week and just open it on the sixteenth and bring it back to court on the twenty-third, to see if that extra week gives us a little bit of, a better chance of getting more responses.
And this is a rebid for those items?
It's a rebid for the three items that we need, but did not receive any bids during our standard of raw material bid.
Court, questions?
I was looking at something the other day, and I don't sit on here. We were going to get a list of like where, where you're, are you going to send this bid out to the people that have bid before?
So I don't have a list of who has bid this. So I'm going to send it to anybody that has provided, and people who, like the vendors that we've bid for regular standard raw material, and hoping that there was a mistake and they didn't bid. But I don't have a list. I think last year we tried to do this, and there was two vendors that we sent it out to, and we also didn't receive.
Where do y'all get your bag, Martin, Martin, Marianna? And who was that other group that y'all used to get CKD from?
Wasn't that dude out of Arkansas?
They were, weren't they down south?
They're over in Middle Lovett, too. And they were hauling most of the product out of, out of Arkansas.
Out of Arkansas.
Is it Ashgrove?
Ashgrove's name of it, yeah. And like I say, our purchasing policy says, you know, before we can buy, we have to go out for bid for twice and see if we get any responses. If we don't get a response the second time, then first and policy says that we can buy from whomever, I guess, if nobody bids.
Mr. Torres, do you, by chance, any of those names, you stated you didn't have on the list, but are those?
So I've talked to Commissioner Richardson, and yeah, I recognize the names. And we've sent them out before. It's just that we don't receive the responses. So I don't have a list of vendors that I know will have corresponded with before.
Still got contact numbers, telephone numbers? We can't speak with them, but we might give those contact numbers to Mr. Torres.
Yeah, anybody that you guys would even think were considered, come to submit a bid, I would be more than glad to call or send them email, send them an email, or even physically send them mail. I know nowadays the postal service isn't as great, and that's caused us troubles before. But yeah, whatever.
Who was the iron ore outfit that moved around? They were on the loop for a while?
East Texas Crushed Rock.
East Texas Crushed Rock.
They didn't bid this time either. So that's, which we don't use a whole lot of anymore, but it does the, the iron ore riprap, comes in handy for deep washouts and stuff to stabilize the ground, so.
Okay. Any further discussion concerning the invitation for bid? Hearing none, entertained a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the invitation bid for cement Portland CKD riprap iron ore as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Torres. Item eleven, consider and take action to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spivey to adjourn at nine thirty-eight. All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously. Thank you very much for being with us, and remember.